Is going to be delivered by Pastor Don Thompson of Northern Conquerors Faith Church. And our pledge of allegiance will be led by Counselor Valerie Abbott. If you're willing and able, please stand.
Good morning and Happy New Year to you all as well. Let us pray. Gracious Father, we thank you for your loving kindness and all of your tender mercies. We thank you for this day that you have made and we will continue to rejoice. We thank you for bringing us through 2023 and into 2024. And as your word says, you declare the end from the beginning. So before we petition you for anything, let us thank you for everything that you have done. We thank you, Father, for life. We thank you, Father, that you've already decided what the end of this year would be for the city of Birmingham. So we thank you for a prosperous year is what we pray for. As your word says, that the government shall be upon your shoulders. So carry this mayor, the city council, the staff members and those that are part of the city government, carry them to the place that you've already ordained for this year. And as they look back at the end of the year, they'll see that the footsteps were truly yours, yours. And we'll be mindful to give you all the praise, the glory and the honor. And we all agree by saying, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, may we please have the roll call?
Good morning and Happy New Year to you all. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Clark. Councilmember Moore.
Good morning.
Good morning, Councilmember Tate. Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Woods. Good morning. Councilmember Smithman. Council President Pro Tem Alexander. Council President O'Quinn.
Good morning.
Morning.
All right. Our minutes are not ready for August 1st, 2023 through December 19th, 2023. Chief, do we have communications from the mayor this morning?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning to the members of the council. Good morning to the members of the public. On behalf of Mayor Woodfin, each of his chiefs, which include myself, Chief Mitchell, Chief Fields and Chief Smiley, members of his executive leadership team and all of the members of the administration, the mayor wants to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Want to start by acknowledging what many of our citizens and you all may have read in the paper, the loss of one of the members of the mayor's executive leadership team, Ms. Jill Medisick. We recently lost Ms. Jill, who served as our chief organizational compliance officer. She passed away on December 23rd. Her memorial was held on this past Friday. On behalf of the mayor and city employees, we want to thank everyone who's reached out with their thoughts and prayers. And we will continue to honor Ms. Jill's legacy and her immense impact on the city of Birmingham and abroad. Mr. President, the city of Birmingham, along with Jimmy Hill Mission, will again open its warming stations from 6:00 PM to 7:00 AM on today, January the 2nd. The decision was also made to extend it to Wednesday and Thursday nights. Those needing warm shelter can come to the Jimmy Hill Mission located at 3420 Second Avenue North. Food will be provided. Transportation to the shelter is also available. Pickup is at Brother Bryan Park, Faith Chapel Care Center and also the Boutwell Auditorium. Thought it important to share with you all, Mr. President, Madam Pro Tem, members of the council and to the public, that the Department of Planning, Engineering and Permits will host their next Coffee with Code Enforcement on Thursday, January the 11th, from 10:00 AM until noon at Dunn Hawkins Recreation Center located at 8920 Roebuck Boulevard. Encouraging everyone to please come out and meet with our code enforcement team, get your questions answered, get updates. Household garbage pickup schedule, as we return from observing the New Year's holiday, Monday and Tuesday trash pickup routes will see a one-day delay while all other routes will remain on schedule. So we want to make sure we ensure that the public is clear that those with Monday pickup will have their trash removed on today. Again, those with Monday pickup will have their trash removed on today. Those with Tuesday pickup will be serviced on Wednesday, January the 3rd. Again, those with Tuesday pickup will be serviced on Wednesday, January the 3rd. Pickup for Thursday and Friday this week will be on the regular schedule. There will be no recycling on tomorrow. And January 3rd, due to the altered house, I'm sorry, there will be no recycling on Wednesday, January 3rd, due to the altered household garbage collection days. Recycling will only take place on January 24th of this month. Additionally, outlined service areas will continue to be serviced for refuse collection on Wednesdays as normally scheduled. Regarding our uniform cart delivery, all single-family residents are now under the same uniform cart system. Businesses located on residential waste routes will need, needing up to two carts and multifamily dwelling units of four or less may apply for carts at a fee per cart. Any business needing more than two carts or any apartments or multifamily dwellings needing more than four carts will no longer be serviced by the city of Birmingham. The Department of Public Works has been addressing issues on a case-by-case basis for residents on difficult terrain. So if you're having those issues, please make sure you reach out to the Department of Public Works or you can go to www.birminghamal.gov/pickup for more information. And finally, Mr. President, Madam Pro Tem, members of the council, public, the city of Birmingham will continue to keep residents informed about bulk trash pickup with daily updates online at birminghamal.gov/boltrash. Residents using the new cart should place them in front of their homes. Any household garbage placed on the ground in alleys or on the ground in front of their residence will not be picked up. Mr. President, that concludes the mayor's report. Thank you.
Thank you. Regarding recycling pickup and the fact that there's no pickup tomorrow, which is the first Wednesday of the month, just want to remind folks that they can bring their recycling items to Birmingham Recycling and Recovery on 41st Street in South Avondale. If they just have so much that they need to get rid of some of their items after the holidays. We do have one upcoming board and agency expiration, the Historic Preservation Authority. We have a term expiring February 24th of 2024. I believe that appointment falls under the Planning and Zoning Committee Chairwoman Abbott. So need to seek to fill that position. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just had a comment for the mayor's office, Chief Sparks, regarding refuse collection. I've been getting some concerns about those special agreements with people who live on hills, where I guess there's been an agreement to continue with alley service, you know, on a case-by-case basis. So some of those people don't feel like they're getting service as committed. So I can give you specific addresses I prefer not to disclose in the public.
And that will help, Mr. President, because some of the alley requested services are a challenge for the trucks. So I know that there have been case-by-case, there's case-by-case support provided, but the location has to be, it has to comport with what the trucks can actually do. So we really do need to know those individual ones.
Yeah, and I believe there's been a commitment to service these from the alley, but.
Please share those.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. All items on the consent agenda will be announced by reading the item number only. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member or the mayor requests the item be removed from the consent agenda. Additionally, a citizen interested in addressing the council with respect to an item on the consent agenda designated for public hearing may request the item be removed from the consent agenda to hold the hearing on the item. Any item removed from the consent agenda will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. For remaining matters, all matters of permanent operation will be read and all public hearings will be announced. Could we please read the items designated as consent on the agenda?
Yes, sir. On page two, we have item three. Page three, we have items four, five and six. On page four, we have items eight and nine. Item seven has been requested to be withdrawn by the Department of, the Capital Projects Department. On page five, we have items 10, 11, 12 and 13. On page six, we have items 14, 15, 16, 17 and 18. And on page seven, we have item 19, and that completes the consent agenda.
All right. Do any members of the council wish to add or remove an item from the consent agenda? Sure. Go ahead.
Guys, is item number six, was that held over from two weeks ago? Did y'all, is that that same grant that we got from Aldott? Okay, okay. I'm good.
Okay. I'd like to renew, remove item number five from the consent agenda. All right. Do any members of the public wish to remove a public hearing item marked as consent? Seeing none, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I wanted to make sure that we were drawing number seven.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, number seven is withdrawn. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We're ready for the vote.
Okay. Getting back into the, oh, we're doing, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Consent agenda passes. First item, please.
Okay. The first item is on page two. Item number one. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. Case number ZAC 2023-00003, to change zone district boundaries from CB1 contingency neighborhood business district to QC2 qualified general commercial district filed by Courtney Jones, the owner, for the property located at 6900 Second Avenue South and situated in the southeast quarter of Section 15, Township 17, South Range 2 West. And this is the hearing of our instituted parties.
Yes, sir. My name is Tim Gambrell. I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham. This is KCAC 2023-3 in the Eastlake Neighborhood and the proposed use is an event center. The applicant would like to open Atlas 360, a full-service event center that will host weddings, receptions, corporate events, private parties, baby showers, et cetera. The operating hours will be Sunday through Thursday, noon to 8:00 PM, and Friday through Saturday from noon to 10:00 PM. The subject property sits on .37 acres of land currently zoned CB1 contingency neighborhood business district. Adjacent parcels to the north, south, east and west are zoned R3 single-family district. The property, I'm sorry, the parcel to the east is also zoned CB1 contingency neighborhood business district. The long-range land use plan identifies the property as residential low. The applicant is seeking a C2 general commercial designation. The event center would require a special exception from the zoning board of adjustment to be approved. The parking requirement for this location is one space per 100 square foot of gross floor area, requiring 60 total spaces. The current site has 12 spaces, therefore the site's deficient 48. And the applicant is planning to seek a modification to allow for some parking on an adjacent property that would have to be approved by the zoning board of adjustment. Prior to any improvements being issued, the city's landscape architect will need to review a landscape plan for the site. The site does require B2 buffer on each side that is adjacent to a street, a C buffer along the alley and no buffer required to the adjacent property that similarly is owned to the C2. The city's stormwater engineer has approved this project with all stormwater, floodplain and soil erosion ordinances applying. The Department of Transportation has reviewed the site plan and does not have any concerns with traffic flow, parking or ingress, egress for the site. The Eastlake Neighborhood Association met at a regular scheduled meeting on May 2nd, 2022, reviewed the proposed project and voted unanimously to support the request with 24 votes in the affirmative. The zoning advisory committee, a regular scheduled meeting on May 16, 2023, and voted unanimously to recommend the rezoning request. Planning and zoning committee met on June 14, 2022 to review the proposed project and voted not to recommend the zoning request. The applicant met with adjacent residential property owners and returned to planning and zoning on August 9th. At that time, the committee voted to recommend. We did come to city council on October 10th. And at that time, we voted to send the case back to planning and zoning to consider Q conditions. The planning and zoning committee met again on November 8, 2023 to review possible Qs for the case. The committee again voted not to recommend in the zoning request, the zoning request, but did include Q conditions that are in the ordinance that's before you today. And so that concludes the report.
Chairwoman Abbott?
There we go, new microphone. Now I have to sit way back here. This is a public hearing. We're here today to hear from the applicant and from any concerned citizens and anyone else who would like to speak. So if the applicant would please come forward and state your case.
All right, my name is Courtney Jones. I'm the owner of the building on 6900 Second Avenue South. I also own the building to the right of it on 6908 Second Avenue South. So once we came back to the, I guess the biggest thing with the committee was that we added some Qs to the property. And so what we decided to do was reduce the hours of operations. We only going to do certain community events as well as, I think the biggest thing was, you know, if I was to ever sell the building 30 years from now, by it being C2, the building can be, just say, a gas station. And so I think you have a list of things that we put in that I don't have any intentions of selling the building, but of course, I understand, you know, what we need to do as far as protecting the neighborhood. So I'm fine with that. I've met with the neighborhood, I've met with the community, I've met with the residents across the street. I mean, we've kind of been at this thing now for about a year or so. Hopefully today, we can come to a, to an agreement. And I think you have the, I think you guys have the list of Qs that the building could be if I was to ever sell the building already. I think you have a list of that, right?
Okay, thank you. We will hear, are there any people here in the audience who wish to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, do members of the council have any questions they would like to ask? President Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a question and mainly for the committee. When you met on November 8th, were these Q conditions presented to the committee at that time? Or these Q conditions have come about after we've met on October 10th? Did you all hear these as part of your committee?
The Q conditions were considered at our last committee meeting, which the council sent it back to the committee for consideration of Q conditions. So these are after our last council meeting and after our last planning and zoning committee meeting.
Perfect, thank you very much. Because I was looking at the hours of operation that changed from your original plan. And what was the consideration here just for the neighborhood or?
Yeah, just for the neighborhood, like I said, I'm a business owner over there as well already before this particular business is going to open up. So I didn't want to be, you know, I wanted to work with the community as well as I didn't want to affect anything that we had already going on with the current business. So we just reduced the hours to meet everybody's needs.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mrs. Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Wanted to just ask you how you plan to operate in a way that will make sure that people who are utilizing your facility when you're not there are adhering to, you know, say, the off-site parking arrangements? Because I know my tendency is to get as close to the door as I can. And if there's public parking available, I'm going to use that and not look for the space around the corner, across the street, down the street, whatever. So what's your plan for making sure that there's adherence so that there's not all this pressure on the neighborhoods, like on the neighbors, the people who live close by so that they can get in their driveway? Or maybe they need to park in front of their houses instead of your patrons? How will you operationally ensure that? Because you probably won't be there all the time. And it'll be third parties who are using it.
Right.
Can you just give me a sense of how that's going to work?
So everyone who books the venue will have to have security. So everything is not 100% of course, but we actually have access to the parking lot that's right next door. A full parking lot nobody uses that the owner of their parking lot has allowed us to use. So our enforcement team, our security team, you know, direct our patrons, our guests to park in that parking lot, the site parking lot and as well as 69th Street. Our plan is to not let anybody park on Second Avenue South because they don't have to, because we have plenty parking that's next in between, you know, next to the building on site in the designated parking area. So it shouldn't be a problem at all.
Just to follow up. So the security that, say, the people who are having the event, they all have to hire security from a list that you've trained in the rules of?
Right, right. Yes, ma'am. It'll be mandatory.
Okay.
Any other members of the council? Yes, Counselor Williams?
My question is for the committee and I think it's kind of maybe getting what Ms. Alexander was getting at, but it says not recommended by planning and zoning, but did that not recommendation stay after these Q conditions were added?
Well, this is the situation. 60 parking places are required. He only has 12. The neighborhood, the residential neighborhood that surrounds it is all public parking. You know, it's on-street parking. So you can't stop a member of the public from parking in public on-street parking. So the residents have no defense. If people come and park in front of their homes and take up all their parking, there's really, I mean, the owner was very kind to offer to have his security people stop them from parking on the public street. But legally, you can't stop the public from parking on the street. So you see, the committee, although we looked at the, excuse me, the Q conditions, the situation is that this property is in the middle of a residential neighborhood. There are homes surrounding it all around. And so if the patrons of the location wish to park in the provided parking that his agreement with the neighboring business owner, great. But if they decide not to, then we thought that the residents would suffer because they don't really have a legal right to the on-street parking any more than the visitors to the event center. So that was our logic. Any other council members?
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The number of spaces for the other business that's allowing you to park, how many spaces are included in there?
So we have, so we have 12 on site. The parking lot next door has approximately 30, so that's 42. No parking still will be on Second Avenue South, right? So 6900 and the building to the left, which has the parking lot in the back, 69th Street sits in between, that's connected to the 6900 building and the neighboring building. So that's all street parking. Nobody parks right there. So that's, so we probably have, you know, 70, 80 parking places. And it won't affect Second Avenue South.
All right, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mrs. Jones, I think this is my fourth or fifth time hearing this case presented. Not that she's not doing a good job with it, but so my understanding was we saw this on October 10th and wanted to add, that's when we added the Q conditions and it needed to get re-advertised. But I guess it went back to committee as well. But no, I think you've done a good job of trying to address all of the concerns and really going over and really meeting with the residents and kind of working through some of those issues. But, you know, I think the kind of Q conditions solve some of these issues that did come up. But I appreciate your patience and hopefully this is your last time presenting this to me. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, Mr. President?
Yes, I just had a question for the administration regarding the Q conditions. How do we go about doing enforcement on that? So, you know, in particular on weekend hours where, you know, there's, we have in the Q conditions that the business is not supposed to be operating after 10 o'clock on Friday and Saturday nights?
Yeah, Mr. President. So within the VPD structure, we have a business compliance unit that is very aware of all the business in their Q conditions. So they'll be the unit that will go out and investigate to make sure people are in compliance.
Okay. In the situation, so, you know, if there was a violation, and often that involves, you know, noise complaints, do we have the capacity to address the situation in the immediate circumstances and, you know, not in the days following?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, Mr. President, I believe we're ready for a vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, let me do a roll call vote if you don't mind. Councilmember Abbott?
No.
Councilmember Clark?
No.
Councilmember Moore?
No.
Councilmember Tate? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman?
No.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander?
Aye.
Council President O'Quinn?
Aye.
Okay, that vote is four ayes and five nays.
All right, that motion does not pass. So the zoning request is denied. Madam Clerk, item number two? Madam Clark, item number two?
Item number two on page two is an ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC twenty-twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-nine to change on district boundaries from MXD Plan Mixed Use District to QI-two Qualified Heavy Industrial District filed by Alabama Power Company applicant with permission from the owner, U.S. Steel, for the property located at fourteen-seventy-five Pleasant Hill Road and situated in the southwest quarter of section thirty, township seventeen, south range three west, and a hearing of all interested parties.
All right, Chairwoman Abbott?
Thank you. Mr. Gambrell, would you read our case, please?
Yes, ma'am. Tim Gambrell, I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham. This is item ZAC two thousand twenty-three dash nine, and it is located in the Sherman Heights neighborhood. Proposed use is an Alabama transmission substation. Alabama Power intends to construct a new transmission substation on the property. There is currently a transmission distribution facility located in Enslie. The current facilities on this side of the city are in need of upgrades, and the new transmission station will allow the Enslie station to be upgraded and remain a distribution station only. The subject property is comprised of eleven point five eight acres for the substation and five point five nine two acres for an access easement. Properties to the west are zoned MXD. Properties to the north and east are zoned M-two Heavy Industrial District. Properties to the south are zoned MXD and M-two. The Jefferson County Water Reclamation Facility is located to the north of this site. According to the master plan, Red Rock Ridge and Valley Trail System, there is a trail proposed to the north of this site, but according to the map, the proposed trails do not traverse this property. The long-range land use plan identifies the property as heavy industrial. A utility substation is designed as a facility that regulates electric current, telephone switching, or natural grass pressure for distribution to individual neighborhoods. It is a permitted use in the I-two district. The proposed development will require a survey to be reviewed and approved by the subdivision committee of the Birmingham Planning Commission. Because the proposed lot does not have public street frontage, a variance request, let's see, was granted by the zoning board of adjustment on November ninth of two thousand twenty-three. The city's landscape architect has no concern with the proposed site plan. The applicant will need an ADM permit, SEC permit, and a civil construction permit. Stormwater would also like for them to produce some modeling information about increased impervious area in the location, so they will need to deal with stormwater through a conceptual plan meeting and deal with those issues. All driveways and curb cuts will need to be reviewed by BDOT, Birmingham Department of Transportation, to ensure adequate ingress and egress for the site. The applicant met with the Sherman Heights Neighborhood Association on October second, two thousand twenty-three. The neighborhood voted to support the rezoning request. That vote was for to support and two did not support. Let's see, the applicant met with the Central Pratt Neighborhood Association on September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. That neighborhood voted to support the rezoning request, nine to zero. They did, let's see, the applicant met with the Enslie Neighborhood Association, and the neighborhood voted to support the rezoning request, six to zero in that case. South Pratt Neighborhood did not request the applicant to attend a meeting. They were offered and they declined. The Utilities and Technology Committee, the applicant met with that committee on September twelfth, two thousand twenty-three, and the committee voted to recommend this to the full council, three to zero. They did propose several Q conditions that are listed. The zoning advisory committed a regular scheduled meeting on October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three, and voted to recommend the request with the same Q conditions. Planning and zoning committee met on November eighth to review the proposed project and voted to recommend the zoning request with the same Q conditions. And those Q conditions are included in the ordinance today. And that concludes our report.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Is the applicant here? Are the applicants representative?
Good morning and Happy New Year.
Good morning.
I'm Kimberly Jackson, Community Relations Manager in the Birmingham Division of Alabama Power Company. And joining me is my colleague, David Gray, who's in our Corporate Real Estate Department. He will share more specific details about this project, but I'll start off by providing a little background. As Mr. Gambrell mentioned, we are proposing to build a new transmission substation in the Sherman Heights area to help with grid and infrastructure resilience, and ultimately that will provide more reliability to the customers in the area. We have an existing transmission and distribution substation in Pratt City that is deteriorated. It was built in nineteen forty-one, so it's more than eighty years old. And so, in order to rebuild that substation, which will now only be a distribution substation and build it to the current capacity needs, we will have to relocate the transmission. And that brings us to the proposed construction in Sherman Heights neighborhood. So, we started this process back in August of two thousand twenty-three, as Mr. Gambrell mentioned. We had various meetings with the Sherman Heights Neighborhoods, Central Pratt and Enslie Neighborhoods, and they all approved this project. We've also met with Utilities and Technologies Committee, the zoning advisory committee, and planning and zoning, and received approvals from all of those committees. So, as you see today, we are just here to present the details of the project, and David will carry it forward with those specific details. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. I'm David Gray. I work with Kimberly at Alabama Power. Just so that y'all see, and I believe you have all this in your packets, what we are proposing currently on the Eleventh Street and Enslie is our existing substation. As Kimberly said, that was built back in the forties, and it's falling apart. The concerns now are, on this site, there's a distribution which is serviced to your house and a transmission substation that are adjacent to each other. We don't have the capacity to reconstruct and upgrade this system on the same site. So, what our proposal is, is to turn the entire Eleventh Street site into a distribution station, which will improve reliability in that area as well as allow for future load growth in kind of the Enslie Pratt City area or part of town. Our proposal is to move the transmission station up to the old Enslie Works property, which is kind of sandwiched, I guess, Village Creek and then along with the water treatment plant for Jefferson County. It'll be back in the corner off of Pleasant Hill Road. We selected this site mainly based off of availability and impact on the neighborhood. I'm sure many of y'all have seen transmission lines run into substations. They're big lines. Moving to this site allows us to remove that from residents' properties, and most of the lines already run through that area anyway, so there's minimal impact to the neighborhood once the new site is built. It would actually be removing structures that they would see. So, hopefully, we're going to allow this to kind of improve the area and anticipation of future growth, both off of the Sherman Heights side as well as Pratt City and Enslie side. Our plans for the site, which I believe y'all have as well, include, if you're looking just to kind of orient you a little bit, this would be the water treatment facility. This is Pleasant Hill Road, and I believe there's a gate right before you go into the water facility. We're proposing a access road across U.S. Steel property, which would be right in front of the water facility. There's a turnaround. It would be a gated access road that would then come into another gated area that would contain our sub. And I believe all of that's already in place. We're just hoping for your approval today. If there's any questions or comments, we'll be happy to address them.
Thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions regarding this case? I want to thank y'all for the extensive drawings that you gave us that made it clear what you're doing. Sometimes our drawings aren't as good as you've provided, so thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if there are no questions or comments at this time, Mr. President, I believe we're ready for a vote.
Okay, Madam Clark?
All in favor, let us hear the aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that item passes. Thank you.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you.
Next item, Madam Clark?
Okay, the next item will be item number five, which is on page three. A resolution accepting cooperative bid and the lump sum quote of EC America, Inc., eighty-four forty-four West Park Drive, Suite two hundred, McLean, Virginia, in the amount of one hundred forty-two thousand, one hundred forty dollars and seventy-two cents for Procore project management software, GSA contract number GS three-five-F oh-five-one-one-T, for a period of one year, not to exceed three years, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with EC America, Inc., and substantially the form contained within the cooperative award documents, and in accordance with said quote, providing that the total compensation payable under the contract not exceed the appropriation. Need a motion, please?
All right. Any members of the council have questions on this item? I actually removed it from consent, so Chief Mitchell, can you tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
Yes, sir. So, what's before the council is an item that our capital projects department uses for their project management tracking system for all our capital projects. So, this is just basically a renewal. They have been using this software for the last three years. So, this is what they basically use to improve efficiencies in managing the different projects that we have, if it's ARPA related, if it's surplus, or visiting our barn projects. So, that's what's before the council.
Okay. Just a general question about capital projects. So, that's a new department. Where are we at in terms of staffing up that department?
So, yes, so this, I think the council approved capital projects for two years ago. Right now, they're currently almost full in capacity. We added some more vacant positions in this last budget cycle. Recently, just hired another deputy in that capital projects department. So, they're working pretty frisically to try and add more capacity to their department outside of trying to hire the outside contractors for when we have capacity issues.
Thank you. Any additional questions? If not, we're ready for the vote.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, that motion passes. Next item, please.
Hey, the next item would have been item seven on page four, which, again, it was withdrawn at the request of capital projects. And after that, that completes everything on the agenda.
All right, thank you. At this time, we will have announcements from our counselors. Councilor Clark, are you ready?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, greetings from District Eight, it's two thousand twenty-four, wow. Neighborhood meetings, the Fairview neighborhood will meet tonight at five-thirty PM via conference call. You can call the District Eight office to get the dial and information. That number is two-five-four-two-three-oh-four, that's two-oh-five-two-five-four-two-three-oh-four. The Thomas neighborhood also meets today in person. They're gathering at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas at six-thirty PM today. Also, this is a little lead time, on February seventeenth, the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas will host its annual health fair. They will feature Narcan training, which I need to refresh on, but they do a really great job with this health fair, and I'm announcing it early in case there are people who want to participate and provide information to the community. You can call our office to get in contact with the folks at Mount Hebron if you would like to participate as like a vendor or exhibitor in the health fair on February seventeenth from eleven to two. Also, when it rains, it pours. We haven't had much rain lately, but you can learn to capture and save rainwater for when you need it by joining horticulturist Keith Turney for a do-it-yourself rain barrel workshop. You can learn how to construct a rain barrel and take it home with you when you're finished. The cost for the workshop is sixty dollars for members of the Birmingham Botanical Gardens or seventy dollars for non-members, and the registration covers all the cost of the materials and instruction, so you don't have to bring any tools. The workshop provider is Kahaba Barrels. It's going to take place on January eleventh from eleven to one at the Birmingham Botanical Lastly, as we, you know, get rolling in this new year, I'm filled with gratitude for the privilege of serving as a member of the council for the city that I love, and I want to extend my warmest wishes to each of my colleagues here on the dais and in the administration and every resident and stakeholder of the city. My hope in this new year is that this council will continue to work effectively with the administration and our citizens to ensure that our city continues to grow and provide avenues for progress, inclusivity, and prosperity for all. So, here's to a happy and prosperous and healthy two thousand twenty-four for everyone in Birmingham and beyond.
Thank you. Councilor Moore?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. So, first things first, we have a couple of Neighborhood Association meetings that are meeting this month. So, Collegeville has rescheduled for January the eighth at six PM. They will be meeting at Greater New Antioch Baptist Church. Zion City, Bronswell Heights, and Maple Grove, along with Fairmont, will not be meeting this month, but Brummond Heights will be meeting on the first Thursday of this month at one PM at the Bronswell Heights Community Center. The Community Development Committee will be having our meeting at two PM on January the thirteenth in council chambers, so I look forward to seeing you all there. And the Parks and Rec Board will be meeting on Wednesday morning at Legion Field at nine AM. Speaking of Legion Field or Parks and Rec, they are hiring for lifeguards. So, if you would like to join the team, now through May tenth, there are open positions that are available. The requirements for this position is you can be, or certifications are preferred, however, non-certified lifeguards will be trained classes to begin February first for certification. You must be at least sixteen years of age on or before May tenth. All interested parties, please contact Terry Sewell, not our Congresswoman, at two-zero-five-two-five-four-two-one-eight-nine or two-zero-five-two-five-four-two-three-nine-one. Lastly, I know over the Christmas holiday, there was some concern over in the North Birmingham community. There was a fire that broke out over on Blue Stone Coke's property, and several people were concerned that Blue Stone Coke was back in operation. I was able to get in touch with the Jefferson County Department of Health to, you know, confirm that that is not the case, so I just wanted to state publicly that there's no reason for folks to be concerned about Blue Stone Coke being back in operation at this time. So, yeah, I want to say happy holidays to everybody. It feels good to be back in the council chambers, and pass it back over to you.
Thank you, Councilor Moore. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I want to say that, first, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone and say how thankful I am for these new microphones. I can actually hear people, and it makes me feel like, you know, maybe there's not something wrong with me, so it's fun to be able to hear and to see. The lighting in here is so much better than it was. So, we have a chance to start all over again with a new year, and I think that's exciting. The next planning and zoning committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, January tenth at three-thirty in the council chambers, so I know the committee members of planning and zoning are excited about that. Neighborhood Association meetings, tonight, we have four.
Neighborhood Association meetings tonight, we have Forest Park South Avondale neighborhood meeting at the Avondale Library. And the next Glen Iris neighborhood meeting will be Monday, January the eighth at six-thirty P.M. at St. Elias Maranite Catholic Church. So, we want to continue to encourage people to either call three-one-one or to use the My Beham three-one-one app to report problems in the neighborhoods. And, you know, that's a great way to do your reporting. The app is especially good because you can add photographs. And we want to continue also to ask residents of District Three to go to our website, which is www.behamdistrictthree.com. And we just want to wish everyone to continue to have a Happy New Year for the rest of the year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Abbott. Counselor Smithman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everyone. The next Budget and Finance meeting is this Monday, January eighth at three-thirty P.M. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. There aren't any neighborhood meetings today or this week, but the next one will be Monday, January eighth at five P.M. That is the West End Manor neighborhood meeting, and it will be at New Hope Baptist Church. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Smithman. Counselor Woods?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year. Excited to be back in the chambers. But shout out to the about-well y'all. Held us down. Don't want to make y'all feel bad. But, yep, good to be home. Real quick, just one thing. I'm disappointed today. We recently approved a zoning for a restaurant over some pretty extreme resistance from the community. And so, I was disappointed today that we denied the zoning request here from a gentleman who had a hundred percent support from the twenty-four people attending the neighborhood meeting. And personally, I put a lot of thought and consideration into how we can build black business, how we can work to close the wealth gap. And so, that was very disappointing today to see. Just, it's a micro. I mean, everything's a micro and macro conversation, but I was a little bit disheartened to kick off the year that way. Also, I wanted to extend condolences to Ms. Mitasik's family. I know she was a tremendous loss here for the city and will be missed. The Apple Valley Neighborhood Association will meet, well, actually, the meeting that was scheduled today is canceled. They'll resume their meetings regularly in February. The Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, January fourth, at Huffman High School. That meeting is at six-thirty P.M. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, January fourth, at seven P.M. They're still meeting via Zoom. And the Roebuck Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, January eighth, at East Precinct. That meeting is at six-thirty P.M. Just want to continually encourage all residents to participate, get involved in your neighborhoods, really, you know, understand that your voice matters, like the cumulative feedback is very important to the decisions that get made here at City Hall. So, continue to be engaged and participate. And the BeLitter Free twenty twenty-four cleanups will kick off on Monday, January fifteenth, at nine A.M. at Rebirth Christian Fellowship. You can visit the Black, www.BlackWarYourRiver.org to register yourself or your group. This is also MLK Day, so if you need a option for a day of service for yourself or your group, this was a great event last year. Had a lot of people out. So, it was a great opportunity to get out and impact the community, and looking forward to a great twenty twenty-four. And so, let's continue working, continue building, and just improve daily. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Woods. Counselor Tate?
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy New Year to everyone. Echo everything everybody has said. Hopefully, it'll be a great year, twenty-four. These are the announcements for District Nine. Wileham Neighborhood Meeting will be held on today, January the second, at six P.M. at the Wileham Library. Cypress Hill Family Neighborhood will meet on Wednesday, January the third, at the Cypress Hill Plant Community Room. Central Pratt Neighborhood will meet on next Monday, January the eighth, at six P.M. virtually. And you can call in at seven-two-zero-seven-four-zero-nine-seven-three-two. The pass code is three-four-triple-eight-oh-eight. Sherman Heights Neighborhood will be held on next Monday, January the eighth, six P.M. at the Morning Star Christian Church located at sixteen-hundred Slaton Avenue. You can also dial in by calling nine-five-two-two-oh-six-four-nine-one-eight, pass code two-two-three-four-one-eight. Next Public Safety meeting will be held on Tuesday, January the ninth, at one P.M. in the council chamber. Please submit agenda items by email on Wednesday, January the third, or later than twelve noon, to mspatricecolins@birminghamal.gov. Please keep Mr. Gregory Stanley, his family, in your prayers. Also, final announcement is Workforce Development and Education Center located at twenty fifteen Twenty-Sixth Avenue North, Savannah National Command Center is offering their Class A CDL training. The eligibility requirements is to have some diploma or equivalent legally able to work in the U.S. current Alabama driver's license. Must be eighteen to class start date. Registration is the ninth, tenth, and eleventh, from ten A.M. to three P.M., and the orientation is that on January the twelfth at ten A.M. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Counselor Tate. Counselor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development Tourism Committee is canceled today due to lack of submissions. The next meeting will be the sixteenth, and please get those submissions to indiabailey@india.bailey@birminghamal.gov by Thursday, January eleventh, if there are any. Eastwood Neighborhood will be meeting January the fourth at six-thirty at the regular Habitat location. And Happy New Year to all of you guys, as well as to the public. We're still having a little bit of celebratory gunfire a couple days after New Year's, which is keeping me up, so let's please stop celebratory gunfire. Now that, you know, we've rung in the new year, let's stop shooting in the air. And it is illegal and it is dangerous, so please stop. And, you know, get lots of calls and emails about it. You know, it's crazy when we get a call or an email about, hey, my neighbor's shooting up in the air. Well, I, you know, y'all, come on. Let's do better than that. There's nothing that I can't go over to the neighbor's house and, you know, take the gun away. So, act like an adult. Stop shooting in the air. New Year's is coming on. It's over. We can stop that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor Williams. Pro Tim Alexander?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are the announcements for District Seven. On Wednesday, January third, there will be bulk trash and brush pickup scheduled for the following neighborhoods in District Seven: Jones Valley, Hillman, Hillman Park, and West Brownsville. On Friday, January fifth, we'll have our first neighborhood meeting of the year that will be held by the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association. They meet at the Powderly Branch Library at four P.M. at thirty-three-oh-one Jefferson Avenue Southwest. So, if you live in the Jones Valley neighborhood, please join us for that first meeting of the year. On Monday, January eighth, the Oxmore Valley Neighborhood Association will meet at the Oxmore Valley Community Center. They meet at six P.M. at nineteen ninety-two Winona Road. On Tuesday, January ninth, the Administration and Government Affairs Committee will meet at two P.M. in the council chambers. Deadline for agenda submissions is Friday, January fifth, before twelve noon. I also want to wish everyone Happy New Year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Pro Tim Alexander. Want to start off my announcements by thanking the staff of the Battlewell Auditorium and IMS for accommodating us for several months while we were having council meetings over there due to renovations of the council chambers. Just really appreciate you guys for setting up each week and making sure that everything was spot on for our council meetings. But we're very happy to be back in council chambers. I also want to thank Counselor Moore for making the announcement about the lifeguards. You know, it was twenty-eight degrees this morning on January second, but with these, you know, thirteen pools in the city of Birmingham, in order to get them open, we have to have lots of lifeguards. So, and the only way that those pools get open is if we have staff to staff them. So, it's really important. Those pools are very expensive to maintain and operate. And, but we can't operate them if we don't have the appropriate staff. So, if you know someone who's interested in, you know, a summer position, whether young or old, please let them know that there's an opportunity with the city of Birmingham as a lifeguard. Want to thank Counselor Abbott for making the announcement about the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association meeting tonight at six-thirty at the Avondale Library. Eastlake Neighborhood Association also meets tonight at six P.M. at the Household of Faith Church on Division Avenue. Wahoma Neighborhood Association will meet this Thursday, January fourth, at six P.M. This is a online meeting, so please call our office at two-five-four-two-six-seven-nine for additional information. Next week, Gate City Neighborhood Association will meet on Monday, January eighth, at four P.M. at the Gate City Campus of Hope. And Oak Ridge Park Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, January eighth, at six P.M. at the Harris Homes Recreation Center. Other announcements, the Transportation Committee will meet on Monday, January eighth, at two P.M. in council chambers. Please contact Kimberly Phillips at kimberly.philips@birminghamal.gov with any items that need to be submitted to the agenda. And finally, there is a vacancy on the Birmingham Waterworks Board. Anyone interested in that position should email your letter of interest and your resume to kimberlyphillips@kimberlyphillips@birminghamal.gov by Friday, January twelfth. And that concludes my announcements. Yes, Counselor Abbott?
I neglected to mention that there is a vacancy on the Birmingham Planning Commission. So, this is the first announcement that there is a vacancy. And if you're interested, please send your resume and a letter of interest to our office at valerieаббет@birminghamal.gov. And I apologize for forgetting that. I'm so excited about having a new year. And I wanted to also say something about what Counselor Williams said. I had to walk home on New Year's Eve because my battery died in my car. And as I was walking home, the celebratory gunfire was going on. And it occurred to me that I could die on my way home from a bullet from one of those idiots who shoots their gun up in the air. You know, people don't seem to realize that the bullet goes up, but it has to come back down. And when it comes back down, it's going just about as fast as it was when it came out of your gun. So, you know, it occurred to me that I might not get home. And that was not a very comforting feeling as I was walking along listening to how much gunfire there was. There was an incredible amount of gunfire. There were fireworks too, and they were quite attractive. But I was, you know, that's illegal also. You know, attractive or not, but at least they wouldn't kill another person like the guns will. So, it brought it home to me very personally that I might not make it home because of those people shooting their guns up in the air.
Counselor Williams?
But that, do we have any information on how many arrests were made for celebratory gunfire over New Year's Eve?
No, sir, not at this moment, but we do follow up with BPD on both tracking via ShotSpotter and enforcement. So, we'll get that back to you all.
I will. Would you like me to send an official email to you guys?
That's fine. That's right.
Because I would like to know, you know, we're making a significant investment in ShotSpotter. We allegedly take those casings and put them through NIVN, and I'd like to see some follow-up on that.
Alright, thank you, Counselor Williams. We do not have any requests from the public today. Want to thank our officers on duty. This morning, we have Joshua Wood and Jonah Taylor, both from the South Precinct. Thank you, gentlemen, for being with us. That concludes our agenda. Do we have a?
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Alright, meeting adjourned. Thank you.